Let everybody rise to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call.
Mayor Westergaard.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
This is a special meeting, so there won't be any public forum. We'll move on to five agenda items the council has. The first one tonight is Resolution 2024-10, Making a Ward of Construction Contract for Lakeview Community Center. Your motion to approve.
I make that motion. I'd like some discussion.
You've got anything new to bring up?
Well, I'd just like to make a, make it public. I'd like to question Dave. You know, two years ago, when we come on the council, he told Dale and myself, he said, "I will not put another 10 cents for this project of city money." I'd like to know where it turned.
From that time, I changed my mind due to, I'm pretty confident in the committee on raising the amount of funds that are necessary to complete the project by the end of the day, due date that it's done. Plus, what's weighing heavy on my mind also is the grants that we applied for, we got, and if we lose those, we have two other projects, large projects that are coming up, the water plant and the substation with our electric department. And with those projects coming up, we're going to need grants to help us with those projects. And, you know, any of these grants that we, that helped fund this project, if we have to give those back, then we're not going to be, are not going to be available to us. So, and I see the benefit more now than we, than I did a couple of years ago of what good a community center is going to do to this, to our town. So, I guess, from that time till now, yes, I've changed my mind. And I think it's going to be a great project for the city of Lakeview.
And you mentioned the fact that you think they're going to raise the grants. What if they don't? Are these people going to sign their name to a pledge to come up with the money?
I haven't, you'll have to ask them.
Grant, you may.
But I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident that they're going to.
I can say that, you know, with the, regarding the fundraising here and everything, so the $100,000 commitment that was, came up last week, generated some more excitement and everything, so we did take another $15,000 pledge through the past few days. So, I mean, you know, success begets success on that regard. As we get more involved, you know, as more projects are being made, we will see, you know, more excitement, more money coming.
I spent, I spent some time on the phone this weekend just because I was curious, because I know where we stand on it. Again, three years ago, the mayor brings a neat little computer rendering of what this thing might or might not be. And, and we said, "Okay, yeah, we'll throw, we'll throw a little bit of money at it, whether it happens or doesn't happen." And now, now that it's happening, I just made some phone calls to some business people in town again that I know have, have committed some money to it and said, "If this goes, are you thinking that you've already donated and that's it?" And presoundingly, every one of them said, "Once we see a shovel in the ground, the excitement level's going to be back up." You know, it's hard to, it's hard to get excited about something that's a pipe dream. Now, we're not, we're past pipe dream time, it's, it's time to build this thing. And I think the people that have committed their time and energy and money to it, I don't, I don't see any reason how they won't commit more time, energy, and money to it to see this thing through now that they're there.
So, we're short $519,000 with that $15,000 donation. That's a pretty large gap, there's a large concern. And us as a city council, if this goes through, we're gambling with the city's money for future projects. So, again, all these people, whoever's in favor of this and getting the money, are you willing to pledge up the money to make up the gap difference tonight before we vote on this? I'll ask any one of you. Anyone that's sitting out there, are you guys willing to pledge the difference of that $519,392? That's before any change orders, once we start building.
We have the information.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. People raised their hands to say they're.
So, you want the city to gamble the money?
I think that they've proven $2 point some million that, that the city isn't gambling.
We're short $519,000.
We haven't even dug a hole yet, there's no excitement level that's fired up yet.
So, we're gambling with the city's money?
It's a good gamble, in my opinion.
So, are you willing to make up that gap, though, if it's a good gamble?
Not 500, but I bet I step up for some of it. And a lot of other people do, just like they have on every other project that's ever come through.
That's the only point I want to make, we're gambling with the city's money on future projects that we had in the budget that we've taken out.
But canceling it also gambles on the, the city's money on future projects.
No, it doesn't.
Future grant.
That's bullshit. And you guys all, just a minute, it is definitely not accurate. I talked to the CAT grant person herself, and she said it does not affect future grants.
And that's not the only grant.
So.
Is your second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Beckman.
Nope.
Frank.
Absolutely not.
Okay, motion passes. Resolution 2024-11, approving the construction contract. Your motion to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Beckman.
No.
Frank.
Absolutely not.
Number five, considering approval of a change order one, removing the garage to save some money on the project. First, who needs it?
Um, well, and basically, you know, I'd ask Bob, and so, one of the items, if it is so chosen to remove the garage from the building project, and this is what we would call the catering garage, it's not the canopy. We have, you know, there's grant dollars for that. But this would be like the catering garage that would be on the west side of the building. So, considering that the contract, you know, what, what could come out of the contract? And the garage was one of the things that if we were short money, that that was one thing that could come off of the project. So, you don't have to decide this tonight, but it does need to be decided at some point. So, I did go ahead and add it because there are some engineering, some structural things with that side of the building that if you're going to add, you know, you're going to take off a garage, they just have to be taken into consideration as the construction company begins to order their materials. So, that's why I had put this into tonight, it would come off, what did I say, about what, $40,000?
That's not something we have to vote on tonight, though, or.
It is not something that you have to vote on tonight, but probably within the next few weeks, within, you know, I didn't get a complete answer from Bob on what the drop bed date is, but, you know, we need to do it at some point here going forward, you know, whether it's next week or, I would say, the latest on the middle of March meeting. So, that, that this would have to be decided, so that they could make their adjustments.
I say that kind of falls back into you guys now. This is, you just got the bid for the premier building, so if, if you don't want to cut down, let's raise some more money for it. That's the best way I can think about it, right?
We got a chance to wait a little bit?
I'd say if we've got a couple of weeks to wait, let's see, let's, at the next main meeting that we have, if you guys show up and, and just give us an idea where you're at, so we can see how much is still coming in.
And, and I will note, keep in mind, that there, you know, is this a, this is a luxury item, part of it. You know, other pieces that they really wanted in here was the stonework and those kinds of things, and that's in this building right now. So, I guess, you know, just going forward here in the next couple of weeks and, and, you know, I will, I will say, I will write hurt on this project to make sure that we get the funding.
So.
But what I will say is, you know, this, this is one of those pieces. You have a lot of other expenses that aren't necessarily completely accounted for. I tried to estimate to my best ability to say, "Okay, you've got probably close to another between engineering fees and different things, you've got close to another hundred grand." You know, that's why your funding gap is where it is, you know, that, that those monies have to come up with. So, I'm just, I'm just making sure that everybody's informed and knowledgeable.
This is one of those things that, you know, in a short amount of time, we can decide, that, that's an add-on thing. So, I don't, I don't feel that we've eliminated any part of the structure to make it, I'm glad we didn't make it 20 feet smaller, we can't add 20 feet later. So, the garage is something that, worst case scenario, you take it off and any year down the line, you add it, so, but I think.
So, it can be added down the line?
I think it should be able to be added down the line. It may cost a little more added down the line, because they, you know, some of the, if they're laying it out. But I, I, a garage is something that can be re-added to it, I would say, so. I, I say we give that, what, three weeks, next week's a regular council meeting, and then two weeks to that, and just see what, see what happens from there.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, but consider payment for Beanstrung Kim, $2,000 for engineering fees to date.
So, I gave you, just because I had a question on it today, I, I hadn't had a letter and I hadn't, I guess, shared it. So, and I'll kind of read this. "In the summer of '23, Mayor Westergaard asked the writer if Beanstrung Kim would be willing to donate services to put together bidding documents for the community center project. At the time, it was indicated the city had fairly complete design and drawings prepared that should cover all the major aspects of the project. Based on that description, the writer agreed to provide the services to package the bidding documents as donation to the project. At that time, the writer estimated the value of services donated would be the range of $25,000 to $30,000. As they started work on bidding documents for the project, became apparent that the work that had been completed on the project consisted of several different efforts that were not, and I will say, not well coordinated. There was a significant amount of both missing and conflicting information. Became apparent that the amount of work that would be necessary to develop reasonable complete design and develop the bidding documents was far more significant than had been contemplated based on the description of original. So, through Beanstrung, I'm going to just move on down. Billing cycle, the costs that were incurred for the design of the project were approximately $47,000, while this amount exceeds with the original anticipation level of effort that was agreed to. Beanstrung Kim determined it would donate those services to the project. Beanstrung Kim's request is services beyond that level would be commensable under the project. So, enclosed the copy of the invoice for our mid-December to mid-January billing cycle, the invoice is amounted to $32,000." So, in a sense, what Beanstrung Kim has donated is up to $47,000 so far. This $32,000 got us to the bid, and then we've got a document, you know, attached that will get us through the rest of, of the project. Which is about $42,000, $43,000. Anyway, so that's the story on the $32,000.
So, that's, that $32,000 is donated, though?
No, the $32,000 is not donated, it was $47,000. So, basically, to get to the bid documents and to bid was 47 plus 32 on the work that V and K did to get us to the bid.
So, what they did was? So, $79,000?
Yes, to get us, to get us to where we are today.
And we're anticipating another $87,000?
No, only, the, the rest to get to the end of the project is approximately $43,000. That's what they, that's what the second document that you have, engineering services during construction. Which I tell you, in my personal opinion, is a bargain. So, I just wanted to give you a background story on what the $32,000 was for. And that is going to be, I mean, right now, it's reimbursable from the foundation, so.
But we need to pay it.
We need a motion to pay that?
Yeah, we do need to get it paid.
I make the motion to pay it.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Beckman.
No.
Frank.
Absolutely not.
Okay, we need to consider proposals for engineering services during construction.
So, what V and K has proposed to get us through the end of construction, which I provided a document on that, is basically $43,000. This would be, yeah, it would, it's page 16. And this was basically getting us through the construction of the project, having them come and review and watch over it.
Make it sure it's going right.
Yep.
Your motion to consider the proposal.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
Beckman.
No.
Frank.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
That ends the community center. You're welcome to stay for the police budget, we're going to talk about the canine dog, if anybody would like to stay. Thanks for coming.
So, don't worry about.
That telephone, uh, private guy, he got pulled. And he's going to be back in town. Okay. You're welcome, I'm ready to lie. Okay, talk about the police budget.
Um, I don't know, Chris, do you want to talk about the canine first, before we get into the rest of it?
Yeah, we're looking, uh, Kane's, basically, he's moving on from our department, so we're looking to replace his canine with a full-time canine, him like you. Similar to what Kane, how we work canes, we want to make sure that all the funds are raised, we don't want to put any hardships on the city at all, so I'll, I'll let George kind of discuss how we're going to use it and what we're going to use it for, and.
So, for, uh, as Chief was saying, Kane Junkman moved on, he ended up going, well, he's applying for South Dakota. So, we lost a, a dog, which was very valuable for us. What we're trying to do is, we raised a bunch of funds so far for a Labrador Retriever. What we're trying to do is try to have a better community bond, also prevent crime and deter crime. Having a dog for the police department is a valuable tool. I would say almost 90% of our crimes have to do anything between drugs. So, with a Labrador Retriever, it would be a narcotics dog and also a tracking dog, so when it comes to human scent, also evidence recovery. The reason why we're looking at a Labrador Retriever is the county has two dogs, but they're German Shepherds. We want to get away from the normal patrol dog and have more of a de-escalation tool. It's one of the things that we're seeing as a common trend now, is having Labrador Retrievers, because they're more of a companion dog. So, we can utilize that in a bunch of different ways on top of that. School searches, having a Labrador Retriever versus German Shepherd running down the hallway would be a lot better. Also, building that community bond with the school. If we can prevent crime at the school, it's going to help us a lot, because we get how many calls at the school, at least once a week. Also, having a Labrador Retriever would de-escalate for, let's say, any crimes that come to victims that are in distress, right? So, when it comes to, I know Dave could probably say that, and also Dale, when you go onto a call for service, let's say, if something traumatic happens, having a Labrador Retriever on the scene will help bring down, let's say, emotions. So, like, if we have a juvenile victim of any sort, or even domestic violence, having that dog, the pet, would actually make testify, testifying a lot easier or witness statements. Another thing is, again, drug prevention. We don't really have a really decently good tracking dog in the county. So, if we have a runaway juvenile or anything not at risk, and if we have a Labrador Retriever to go out and, let's say, do those welfare checks or, or anything, that dog's not going to be trained to bite, so it would be a lot better and a lot more safer for juveniles. Another thing is that we're looking at, it's just community building. So, having a dog is, is a great PR tool also. So, we have special events all the time, we're recording, well, basically all summer, we have events. So, having a dog out there, especially a Labrador Retriever, their pests and narcotics sniffing, so if we're just walking around, let's say, people are just petting the dog, a lot of people don't know that that dog's going to be working. So, if that dog sits down in front of somebody, I'm going to know, "Hey, this guy should not be here at our events, because there's something that he shouldn't have in his pockets." So, that's going to make events a lot more safer for us and for the city. Yeah, we raised about, we got $5,000 from the board of supervisors a couple of weeks ago. They helped donate, we've been doing t-shirt sales and also just straight donations. So, we raised about, what, almost $10,000 for the dog. The purchase of the dog itself is $7,500. And then, when it comes to training and getting that fully certification for a year, it's $10,500.
$3,000 on top of that.
$7,500. So.
So, 10 to 5 total?
10 to 5 total, yep. And then, um, so we're, we're pretty much there, I, I know that we're going to be there. Also, equipment might cost a little bit of money, but we have some other ways that we're looking at donations. We have, in April, we're doing 100 People Who Care, which there's a lot of people that are interested in helping us out. So, hopefully, that brings us up to another $4,000-ish. So, I think that's where we're at. Again, having that dog on the, as a full-timer is going to be a lot better for the community and a lot safer. And I think we could do a lot of things with it. I plan on it. What we want to do is, we want to start doing a lot more PR stuff. So, what we want to do is, we want to continue donations out through every year. When it comes to big events, have a standout, sell t-shirts. And what we want to do is fund the canine programming for training and then also trials, because that, that costs a little bit of money, vet bills. And then also give back to the community. So, we want to use it as like a toy drive or some type of scholarship. We want to give back to the community and have a lot more relationship with the school and with the juveniles here than they do at Wally. So, I think that's, that's our plan, and hopefully, hopefully, everything goes good, and that, that's what we're trying to do, so. You guys have any questions?
Who's going to be the main handler?
I will.
It'll be you, it'll be you.
Yes, sir.
So, what are the estimates above and beyond between, on the equipment side of it, do you, for the cage?
I'll go to it.
Yeah, go ahead, you got nothing there.
So, for a brand-new kennel, it could cost a lot of money. However, we reached out to other places. Crawford County has a kennel for a Dodge Charger, which, I don't know if they're willing to fully donate, but we could probably get it for a lot cheaper. Also, we went to Monroe PD, they have a kennel for a Dodge Charger. So, we should be able to get the equipment donated to us, just the installation of equipment. But we already have a Charger that's going out for installation, that's already there. So, we could just use that in, in the same cost, so we don't have to pay for double installation labor, so.
So, the dog will always be in a kennel in the car?
The dog, the dog will be with me whenever I'm working.
In a kennel in the car?
In a kennel in the car, yeah, in the proper way that it's supposed to be, yes, sir.
But if they need the dog when you're not on duty, you'd bring it in?
Yeah, so I'll be on call, I'm usually on call 24/7 anyway. So, if somebody needs help or anything, especially when it comes to a dog, our policy says that it's going to be up to me, depending on the circumstances. But if we need a dog at that scene, I'm going to be there. And it doesn't matter if it's, yeah, so.
You just need council approval to get the dog?
Correct.
How about insurance?
It'd be the same insurance that we have, I believe.
Yeah, so you shouldn't adjust our insurance too much, since we already had insurance with Kane's dog.
Your motion to purchase the dog.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
Johnson.
Yes.
Thanks, Charles.
It's a big app, it's a big commitment, and thanks for doing that, yeah.
Thank you. Also, just, just to let you guys know, because I kind of left this out too, just for certain things. When it comes to a Labrador Retriever, also the self-life of the dog, for working years is six to 10 years. So, it's an investment that we're making for a long term, so I just wanted to throw that out there, because I kind of forgot, but I just wanted to inform you guys about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brooke.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we have some general budget discussion.
Yep, so, um, basically, what you have in front of you is, this is the summarization that we have used in the past to provide it to Wally for their estimate on what they have to pay. So, this is what, what I anticipate for the budget for next year. You do have an increase between '23 and '24. A lot of that, if you notice, on the budget itself, is, it's basically personnel costs. Wages, your health, and your health insurance was a big, basically a big chunk of it, because our, our health insurance went up about, what, 19% this year. Wages went up a little bit, but we were trying to be, my understanding is we were, you know, trying to get more competitive. And we also, you know, did a few promotions within the department to also be more competitive. So, really, if you look down on the rest of the budget pieces, they, I'm budgeting pretty much the same. Since we got two vehicles this year, I want to set aside money, but that doesn't necessarily mean we have to set aside as much money as we did. So, maybe even the $20,000 might even go lower, depending on what our needs or how we flow through the rest of the fiscal year. But we won't need to purchase a vehicle next year, because we, in a sense, got two vehicles this year. So, that kind of helps us out a little bit for next year. And so, I mean, as you can see, you know, our overall budget went up. The one thing.
Hey, I got a question.
Yep.
The health insurance, is that a misprint on George's, or is, why is it his so much more than everybody else's?
Because he's on a family plan.
Okay, so, a single is 19, so Colton is on a?
Colton is a single.
Okay, and the other two are on?
Got my spouse.
Spouse, yeah, they're just on themselves and spouse.
Employee and spouse, and the other one's employee and family, okay.
Yes.
All right. I just suppose it's a large difference, that's what I was asking, maybe it was a misprint.
You're right, it is a large difference. So, yeah, so, pretty much, this is kind of what it looks like. The other piece was, if you noticed down the, communications, last year, it was $4,500. This year, I would say it's $14,500, just because the cameras, the, yeah, your body cams and those kinds of things, all of that goes to a cloud versus an internal hard drive that we have here. So, that software in a package is about 10 grand a year. So, that, you, you see where that went up just a little bit. But other than that, we, you know, did take Kane out, but I kind of have him, you know, figured in if we're going to have two reserve officers, so those, if we were to happen to get another one, you know, that time is still kind of divided in, in, in there within the personnel costs. So, that's the police budget in a nutshell. I did add $3,000 for canine maintenance, because that's what Chris kind of told me, was after we have everything and all the equipment put together, we should be able to maintain it for probably about at least $3,000 a year, between food and vet bills and that kind of stuff, so.
I got a question, why do we have so much overtime?
Because we've been busy. We've been extremely busy. The last seven months, we've had 130-some charges filed, and, you know, that's more than the previous two years combined in, in a matter of seven months, and we've been extremely busy.
I mean, we've got 24/7, supposedly, basically, other than the two hours early in the morning or middle of the morning, I guess, 3 to 5, there isn't nobody on, or is there not? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at, oh, it's another $16,500.
Well, and that's what's in the budget, that doesn't mean, you know, that doesn't mean that he.
That was, was last year, so is that in that budget again?
Um, yes, it's in the, it's, it's the same amount in the budget again, yes. Um, you know, two years ago, they had, you know, $4,500 that was spent. Last year was a little bit more than that, it was about $7,200. Our overtime this year was, you know, to date, is close to $15,000. But, you know, and I also know there was a lot of things going on with, you know, Mr. Schultz. But, you know, and I also know there was a lot of things going on with, you know, Mr. Schultz, you know, being busy in that active investigation until the DCI took it over. Um, and different things of, of them helping out, searching, searching a lot of, covering, covering a lot of ground. Um, and then, you know, whatever, I mean, his caseload, so.
Really, five percent really is what that number is? Five percent, you're figuring overtime, that's...
Can you help without giving away any investigative information? I get this question asked to me quite often, they see our cops not in our jurisdiction or city limits. For example, they see us up in SAC quite a bit, they see us east of town quite a bit, they see us west of town quite a bit. Can you explain to me, is that investigations that are going on from, in our city? Or is that, sometimes I get the question, are we a town cop or county cop? If you can kind of explain that, so I can explain it to them when I'm asked? Does that make sense, without giving away any...
Yeah, anytime we go up to SAC City, it's either administrative or we're taking somebody to jail, that kind of thing. If you see people going out of town for any reason, it should be because they're being asked to go out of town. The last time that we brought this up, I talked to everybody, and that shouldn't stop. The only way we should go on out of town is if we're being called or we're out doing something official for, for the city.
Appreciate it, I just get asked about it.
Yeah.
If not weekly, bi-weekly, but I just need to be able to give them an answer. I tell them we're all in SAC for paperwork.
If it doesn't stop, rather than bringing it up here, if you wouldn't mind, just come to me, so I can make sure I can lock it down.
This is the only time I ever see, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Right, and I think a lot of it is, you know, and the way Chris had explained it to me when we had talked was, you know, that they get called out on a lot of assists, um, you know, that whether it's the sheriff's office is in one part of the county and, you know, we might be able to help, you know...
So, we assist the sheriff's office once in a while?
And SAC City, because if you look on the weekends, there's, there's a lot of times we're the only ones out in the mornings.
And, and I'm okay with that, and the reason I'm okay with that is, is because I don't want, um, for example, we have a call to Wally or something with a fight or something. We even have SAC City PD coming down here to help with that situation.
I'm okay, I just wanna make sure I can explain when I get asked, why isn't, and this is good enough explanation, I just wanna make sure.
And if they've seen it, just let me know.
It's more of a mutual aid thing.
Right, we can, we can make sure that, be real man. We, we're being called out quite a bit from the county there for a little bit.
And, and, and again, I think it's been, it should be.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, uh, the sheriff's department and our department have worked so well together.
Yeah, exactly.
And they're short too, aren't they, the sheriff's department?
Better than, a lot better than yours past.
At night, typically, they go down to only one deputy after a certain time.
For the whole county.
For the whole county. So, that's when we, and obviously SAC City only has one officer out at a time, so we act as each other's backup.
There's nothing wrong with that, I just wanna make sure I can explain it to our people when I get asked that question, and you, yeah, thank you.
So, are there any, any questions?
Um, with our, our new numbers, that's five hundred and sixty-eight plus, we will readjust Wally's portion.
Yep, so, if you see on the bottom of page seventeen there, um, so monthly fee is hourly cost times eighty-seven hours. So, that per month is going to be, you know, the fifty-nine, forty-six, and then this is annually what Wally's contribution would be, is the seventy-one, three sixty-three twenty. You guys all see that on page seven, at the bottom?
So, that's up about eleven thousand approximately?
Yes.
Ten thousand or something?
Yes, and I, I've made Wally aware of it.
And I think everything's going good with Wally, right?
I talked to Chris the other day, he, he, he loved, he loved what we're doing.
I haven't heard any...
I haven't heard any...
So...
So, good job.
At least there's no more talk of them going to county.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, we can adjust.
So, then, the other topics that I have, I got a couple of things here. Um, one, you already have these sheets, and I've got some other sheets for you. So, next week, we're gonna be putting, you know, together, um, the, to have the, the preliminary budget hearing, 'cause we have to, um, we'll be voting on that. But I wanted you to look at what your levy is going to look like. Um, and this would be, what I put in here, 'cause we had a conversation about it, um, under other employee benefits, I put in a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for what the cost of health insurance that are not proprietary. So, this would include the police department, some of my health insurance, um, and then, you know, a little bit of, I don't, Kay and Tammy probably aren't, but I think, you know, um, I might have some adjacents in there. Um, but, so I put in, and I did put a little bit of an adage in there, so that if, if we, you know, get a bump on insurance, I added probably about five percent to what we currently are paying.
Twenty-five percent.
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't be yet. The last two years have been a...
I know, right? Um, but, anyway, I mean, so this should help, but what it does is, you know, it does increase your levy. From last year, if you go to the next page, and this is kind of like what, this is gonna be a proposed property tax levy. Um, last year, you guys were, I think, at what, seven forty-nine? Um, this would bump you guys up to eight, eight twenty-three.
About the level we were before.
But what it does with the limitation, so if you go back to the front page, 'cause I did, I made a little graph for you, what this does to your rollback, or what it does to a hundred thousand assessed value. So, I took it times a rollback, because your rollback this year really went, so instead of fifty-four percent of that hundred thousand, the rollback goes down to forty-six percent of that hundred thousand. And at the levy rate compared from last year to this year, um, actually, the, the person with a hundred thousand dollars in valuation will pay less property taxes with a higher levy than they would, you know, with, and that's all basically because of the rollback. Even though their valuation might have gone up, their rollback is better. And so, then what they would have paid for that hundred thousand dollar valuation, um, is actually going down. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
And that rollback is something that the state did, correct?
Yes, that rollback is, the rollback, they're held to a percentage of every year on base, based on growth, which, uh, you know, that's why it went down, went down so much this year. Um, so, it was certainly beneficial to the taxpayer. But I wanted to give you guys this information, just so that you are aware. This is the maximum of what we can, of what we can, um, ask for from the taxpayers without, you know, increasing our debt levy and those kinds of things. And your debt levy, actually, I think, went down a little bit. Um, so, and then, part of the conversation, I want you guys to see, as I can even, the budget. And these, I mean, these are preliminary, you guys will vote on this later on, but just to have an idea what a three percent, this is a three percent increase would look like. As you know, I like, I like spreadsheets, I'm into, I'm into spreadsheets.
Oh, some of it is.
Live my life around spreadsheets and formulas, just so that I can make my life easier. Um, so, this really is overall, the front page you have is really the overall synopsis on the salaries. Um, and then what I've kind of broken down, the next one, the next couple of pages are the police department and what their insurance and everything else looks like. Um, and then, when you go on to the next pages, what we had talked about earlier, um, the big ledger spreadsheet, um, we had talked about how things were broke down based on department. And that's kind of what I've done with this spreadsheet, is where I put wages and comparatively to, um, admin, water, sewer, roads, electrical, admin, electrical, and then parks, garbage. That's not, that's actually part of it, but when I took that out, it screwed up my spreadsheet, so I left it in. I wasn't in the mood to try and fix it, but, um, but it kind of gives you, I think it gives you a good synopsis of where everybody's salaries are, um, based on the expectation of, of what the numbers of hours and percentages, where that comes from, um, and kind of go over it. So, just, it kind of, it just, I think, gives you a fairly good overview of what our wages will look like for the next year, if you guys, you know, go with the three percent. The union certainly is at three percent, so that's, those wages are pretty much set with what I have listed in there. Um, but just how it all breaks down into, to what we have going on.
So, we start to negotiate again in twenty-five, is that right?
Yes, yep. So, either late fall or early into next spring, um, you'll start negotiations, because the, the new contract, I believe, would start in July of twenty-five.
Yep.
Do we have any employees with the union?
We don't know, we don't know.
We don't know.
They don't tell us anymore.
So...
Not have to put to the dues, well?
Nope. But, I mean, I think, I just, it'd probably take you a while to absorb it, if you guys have questions, you know, I'm more than happy to answer them.
So, when we start negotiation with the union like last night, and they brought, you know, when they were in here negotiating, they'll have the people that were on the union with them. If they come and there's nobody with them, does that kind of give us a telltale sign that we don't have any employees on it?
Well, they, they gotta, they have to vote on it.
They have to vote it in, and if everybody votes, even if they don't pay, you have to keep it.
Yeah, there's some things, and I, I haven't read the bill, but there's some things going on at the legislature, but I don't know if it made the funnel or not, so I need to investigate, investigate that a little bit. They were, they were doing some things.
Wasn't very big thing today down there for that, or was that...
That could be, I wasn't, I've been...
What the funnel put in?
No, with the unions.
Yep.
There's a, there's some stuff going on where the people are trying to eliminate the union, and then there's people that try to make sure it never gets eliminated, it's a big thing going on state.
Right, yeah, yeah, there's, there's some stuff going on there, so how that should shake out for us, I don't know at this point. Um, but, um, we'll, we'll see how that goes, so. But, like I say, this is a lot of information to absorb, so I kind of, um, wanted to get it in front of you as I began wrapping up the budget.
What is our total budget for the city?
For the, I mean, like, everything?
Yeah.
Or just wages?
Nope, everything.
For everything? I don't have that in front of me. But you'll have that next week.
You're gonna have to vote on it next week?
No, you don't have to vote on it next week, no, I'm gonna, my plan is to try and have it all put together in a package so that you can look at it, what our overall, what our overall budget is with revenues and expenditures.
Based on the eight-point-two-three?
Yes, yep, based on the eight-point-two-three, 'cause you can't, there's no way you're gonna be able to rate, I mean, that's, that's your maximum amount of dollars that you can bring in.
So, when you put that together, can you put, I think, I asked you this before, can you put together the stuff that, you know, we've got, when we do our budget, we've got our expenses, you know, we've got our personnel expenses, and we've got our operating expenses that aren't gonna go away?
Right.
To operate the vehicles and all that stuff, that's, we need that.
Right.
Can we just have that separated out? Easy enough, or how hard is that to separate out?
No, versus your capital, with, versus your capital stuff, I mean, yeah, most of it's now, I mean, it might be a bottom line. I usually try to put it as a, you know, when I put in everything, I try to account for all of the capital, any capital expenditures that we're going to have. But I can certainly make sure that I keep it separated out for you all, so that you know what's capital expenditures and what's operating budget.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you're gonna have, yeah, yeah, yep, so.
That's all part of your big picture of, it might take a little time, a year down the line, but, yeah.
Yeah, just trying to...
To get everything to where you want it to go, as opposed to...
Yeah, how Scott did a lot, did a lot of things, I'm, I'm think I'm finally wrapping around some of the stuff that he did and the way he did it, and the reason why he did it, so, not bad or different, I just do different, my head works differently, so. But I'll do my best to put it in a nice prepackaged.
When, when's our first public hearing?
Um, you guys will set that next week, but I am probably looking at, um, the earliest, we can have it is March twenty-fifth, so I'm actually thinking probably that first meeting in April. Because we don't have to have the budget to the state until the end of April. But I'd like to have it all done and wrapped up and complete.
What'd you say, March what?
We can't do, we can't have a public hearing on the proposed, on that second page that I told you, that proposed levy. We can't have it until March twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay.
But I have to have it to the state, that proposed levy, that's why you guys are gonna vote on it next week, to have the, the hearing and what it looks like. Because I have to have the information to the Department of Revenue, so that they can in turn allow the auditor to grab it, because they are sending out what the, the new piece of legislation from last year is requiring them to send out a mailing, um, to every property owner in the county that tells them what that levy, what the, what their consolidated levy is going to look like between the city, the county, whatever. Um, so that they can, the public can be informed and they can attend the hearing if they like.
So, I just wanna make sure we don't have stuff from March eleventh, 'cause I'm scared when we got...
No, that's why I'm trying to get this all wrapped up, hopefully, this weekend, so that you have it in front of you and what, you know, I think we vaguely talked about everything, and I'm gonna try and wrap it up all into a package this week. I'm going to shut my door.
Don't forget the locker.
Yes.
That's it for the budget?
That's all I got.
Motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, I got one question.
Yep.
This Lakeview Code, you know, package that we got.
Yep, yep.
Are we gonna put together a small committee to go through this?
Yeah, I think we probably kind of, yeah, to kind of go, start going over it, yes, yep.
You know, two thousand, Mayor and you, or whatever, to go through them?
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, we can certainly do that and just start having a conversation over, you know, some of the things. I have some ideas, um, of my own that I would like to possibly see implemented, but we can certainly go over that.
I just, I was just looking at, and I thought, man, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be looked up and information we don't have that you have, you know?
Right, yep, and if there's anything, I mean, if there's anything that you can think of that, you know, you want me to start looking up or you want me to start asking, well, what do other communities our size, what does their ordinance look, look like? I'm more than happy to do that, um, 'cause sometimes, you know, that takes, takes a little bit, you know, of information. Most, everybody has their report online any, anymore, so it becomes a little bit easier, but, um, so.
Does that look easy?
Is there a second for the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, mean to adjourn. Thank you.
Nick, go ahead. Your proposal is there in particular day?